Good night. Now this is an hour and thirty minutes of coming late to the class. It's eight o'clock, not eight five or eight. Okay. I am the faculty, I am sure that seven thirty nine will be the last time, last minute. Students will enter and I will be the last person to enter. That's my policy. And well, how many of you have played in class? How many of you have done actually because I don't find the truth out. Fifty one, if I write the numbers, okay, I don't find the truth out. So, how many are there? Twenty one, twenty students have. Is it? Are they genuinely absent or I mean, is it approved or? Some of them, is it approved by the national authorities? And so, I will take. Yeah, I am fine. We can definitely take. I just want to have a talk. Can I have the other question? Just go with the entire question, maybe there will be some class. Where is the next question? Just call it that. So normally, what is the faculty over here, you give the other question to the faculty or you give? Or do you give the answer? Faculty takes. So what about the other question in respect to, I mean, all subjects is a service? So I am talking about two, two as a services. Then we do a, just take a paper, take a paper, start writing your name and degree. By the time, how many of you bought their newspaper? Newspaper today. Suppose you have each newspaper reading, is it? Newsweek and Annabelle newspaper reading. How many of you brought it? I just want a few of you to go and collect the newspaper and come. Then only I started, peace. It has, it is, it is, it is coming. It does not even come. Just, just. Only two, only two. Good morning, candy, how many of you had breakfast in the morning? What about, I mean, all, all had breakfast? All, or you had breakfast in the morning? What did you have in the morning, candy? After morning. Or do you feel, after dinner, breakfast? No, not you. Okay. Now the rain goes. Is it pleasant to be in the class in the morning after having a hot water? How many of you have had in the morning? Hot, the hot water, cold water? Cold water? Before the, what was the most important news this day? Pretty yes, sir, most important news. Is it very, it is very, uh, Maheshkar Doni or something else? Any of the traction, traffic, something related to, I don't know. There's a rendering related to F A V S. Is there any related to F A V S? All of you actually read F A V times? Do you like the color of the paper? Do you like the color of the paper? I am a liberal grandpa, you know, I don't like the color. Do you like the color of the paper? Techno, is there a reason you don't read it or you do, do you read it? Do you read it? Are you able to follow F A V times? Which paper do you like the most? I don't want to answer my desire for my maximum, I don't know. I just want to answer like something very complete. You know, you know, which part of do you read it? Which, which thing do you actually concentrate on? Now before that, how many of you have taken special education, parents? Major exam of people are related to that. How many read F A V times? Don't have it, have it after you, they have put it across very well that I am reading F A V. I am not going to argue with you, because I am not competent in class in use. Sometimes. I hope everybody is subscribed to the channel. How many of you have? Do you like the case, was it simple, was it tough? Simple, listen. Now, the rest is coming. You had a good one, you had a good one, yeah. It's eight o'clock, not, okay. Now the rain, is it pleasant to be in the class in the morning after having a hot water? How many of you have had in the morning? Hot, the hot water, cold water? Cold water? Before the, what was the most important news this day? Most important news. Is it very, it is very, uh, Maheshkar Doni or something else? Any of the traction, traffic, something related to, I don't know. There's a rendering related to F A V S. All of you actually read F A V times? Do you like the color of the paper? Do you like the color of the paper? I am a liberal grandpa, you know, I don't like the color. Do you like the color of the paper? Techno, is there a reason you don't read it or you do, do you read it? Do you read it? Are you able to follow F A V times? Which paper do you like the most? I don't want to answer my desire for my maximum, I don't know. I just want to answer like something very complete. You know, you know, which part of do you read it? Which, which thing do you actually concentrate on? Before that, how many of you have taken special education, parents? Major exam of people are related to that. How many read F A V times? Don't have it, have it after you, they have put it across very well that I am reading F A V. I am not going to argue with you, because I am not competent in class in use. Sometimes. I hope everybody is subscribed to the channel. How many of you have? Do you like the case, was it simple, was it tough? Simple, listen. Now, the rest is coming. You had a good one, you had a good one, yeah. Or the, okay. Now why do you feel that you are delaying that camping food? Camping food laying off and what is it? Peace, is it related to the food that has been offered or is it related to something else? You feel that it is not good? Why is it not good actually? If you feel it is not good? The thing? It's too hard. How is your post? P G F post as a goal? How do you feel the P G F post as a goal? If I? Now I just want to, I just want to protect us one thing. You believe that nobody is really in the back of the class. Okay, you list the person here. I don't believe that anybody is in the back of the class. So don't have any impression that anybody is sitting back and monitoring. So why do you feel actually? Can the food become more tasty or can anything be done on it on that? What time? What time is it?
Maybe for something, why not, it is getting very hard. So you can, you know, there is something that signals that it is right. It can be, uh, long, long for a long time.
Could that be here?
Long for a long time.
Oh, for a long time. Yes, come. So the paper they are actually become. This is. All, all of the. Maybe all the students will have. Does that have one copy for me? Because I am sure that it will be one copy. I have to. Then I just gave five minutes, just select all the news. Did you feel it's very, very difficult but somehow I am explaining and I am moving? Just five minutes. Tell a couple of the person. Look up, look up, can I, can I? Tell a couple of the person. Ready, I am on.
So, why do you have questions about? Because we are speaking with the US and India. So they have, uh, coming from the United States, for energy, for energy, for energy, defense. Founded by the terrorists.
Can I, can I, can I understand? Now, I don't want you to, I just want to have a conversation. If it is this, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this, 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 looking for, looking for, and there is, there is, we are initiating the P G F. That is where you get involved and so they are trying to have a agreement on the various industries, including the innovations and, uh, please help.
Now why you were, why you were difference between India and you? What are the differences? Anybody, anybody? As for the, what were the immediate differences that happened? Something very important happened during the, uh, attack of India to the US. Then suddenly the war was at hand. Yes, yes, it happened, it happened. Now what had actually happened? Now how could that have had that Dr. Manmohan Singh, signing of an important, uh? Tell me what happened after that. Now why I have it before I give idea of it? Why I says India, India, it was, it was, that is, that is. That is, how many, how many of you have talked about this? I don't know, this is a tough. Who is the, who is the? Secretary. John Kennedy, okay. Now what, why the difference was happened and what are the reasons that they are still talking on this topic? Even though, an important agreement of deal was signed. What are the reasons? Yes, what are the reasons? What do you feel the most predominant reason for this? Or say, is there no reason for it? That's something very, very generic, better economy. There was some reasons, there is a very, very important reason for it. Indian market, two reasons, Indian market, it's not market as such, it's not performing. What does the US want? Because as a regulator, they are not, they are unable to access the Indian government, isn't it? What is, what is that? More interest, they are, they are accessing the company, what is that? The recipe is having imposed by, yeah, okay. Second is, it is also because that another thing, you know, after the nuclear, they are not slow. Why, why, what really happened? Why do the reasons that even though the E two has signed it up, they are not slow on it? Thank you. So what is the reason? What is the reason? Are you, are you? Is it, is it, is it, in America, the president, the leader of the president, the policy, or something? Now who is supreme in America? Because I am just president, but second, I am a world author. And India, what is supreme thing? No, no, it's not Congress. What is supreme? No, no, no. What is supreme? So, yeah. It's not so, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, supreme of the, you, you, but not for the year. Can't be a. No, no, no. What is supreme, supreme? It's not, I have, I have, I have, it's not president, it's, it's, it's queen. So what is, what is supreme? It has been now. It has, it has been. Okay, now the thing is, even if the Prime Minister advises President, President, can, can he reject that? Or the Supreme Court, now as for Indian system is concerned, the whole is highly economic and a lot of countries. Okay, now as far as US is concerned, president is supreme, but concerning things, everything over. Okay, now leave all those. There are three, two aspects which we have come because one is into economic aspect, related to that. US cannot access Indian companies. Why actually, why India is restricting US to access Indian companies? What are the reasons? Do you feel that there has been a new friendship with or labor China? Why that will be approached has been taken? What are the reasons for? What are the reasons for? It's a completely different, it's a completely different society in China. Okay, they are completely different society. You have a constant kind of economy, people go or, but right now people are telling that China is going to be one of the biggest economy. Okay. Now, so there are probably two reasons, one is. One is there have been a slowdown on the friendship side in the sense that the nuclear need have assigned a security account. Second is, on an economic aspect. Now, what is the title of the news so important? Why should India, US look like you are? What is that? I just want one answer. Yeah, what is your name? What's your name? Just it. Have you understood the title? Should I, 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 adding name, I, I, it's a, it's a. Do you have any questions to be asked? Everybody. Don't be very diplomatic as well as democratic, you can definitely ask a question.
Well, I ask one question.
Why not? But the thing is that the Indian already proposed a cognitive we might participate.
In the case, I don't know what, sorry.
Yes, definitely.
Second column, third sentence is a statement, it depends technology that NSA Shivasangar Menon is modeling with the Asha Katar. Who is NSA Shivasangar Menon? No, no. Zodak Ravi.
No, I am, he is asking my, our Indians. That was a, a question. You answer the, the, the.
How many libraries you bought till you are not? What do you mean?
It's answering international security agencies.
Is it there, is he an agent or is he an advisor? Ah, I have one security advisor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, brother. Then this, through your newspaper. Now, why do you think newspapers so important? What are the reasons? It's so important. Why? What actually is stored in the newspaper? Information, information. That's why newspapers store information of this week, as a current, as well as prospect. Current signal, okay. Now, do you feel that what newspaper giving is as similar to a book? What is the difference between a book and a newspaper? What is the difference between a book and a newspaper? Or what is the difference between you, you actually answer that how many of you use DC may very casually, very importantly? Or how many of you use DC model with religiously? Through, how many of you use? How many of you actually use mobile for uploading and downloading a post, I mean, whatever it is. I hope every faculty member is approving. Is it? Okay. Now what is the important of mobile? What is important of mobile? It's a, it's a, something. What else mobile can give? I don't know, what is sharing means what? What do you mean by the term of sharing? I don't know what is the term of share. It is, it is, I am also easily accessible now. What else is, what do you mean by share? I am the teacher. I am the teacher, so I know only those kind of challenges before I feel. This is a decrease of air circulation. Okay. Now, if you have your own enterprise, if you, you have your own enterprise. Maybe you start with enterprise, okay? What important aspects you can, what are your enterprise? I am sure that you will get more than other, maybe a next step. You have an enterprise, or enterprise, or important aspects you can. Is it proper, anything else? Idea of sharing, what is the idea of sharing? So you told two things, one is, one is idea. Now, okay, just, just explain what is the idea, sharing among equal, exactly, absolutely. Is that, is that, is that only obvious for sharing? I think. Probably, yes, yes, probably, yes, yes. Do you feel that you can, you can, you can, you can, you can have something else? What is the important of generating? What are our? Generate value, what kind of value has to be generated? What do you mean by the exact term of value? I am sure I would write a small word over here, I am sure that people would definitely look at it. I mean, students will definitely understand the meaning of this. Okay. The term is simple as this contribution. Okay, do you feel that contribution is a value? What is the contribution value? Contributing to the customers in what way? Providing service, what kind of service will be provided? Now you are here, what kind of service provided? What customer needs, okay. What kind of service, what kind of service can restore the service that can be provided by organization? There is one service that can be, of these services in specific terms, an organization will deliver to the customers. Concerned, is it, is it a service? Is it a service? I am talking in separate terms. What is service you are looking at? You mean to say that customer service should be carried out. Now how do you carry out, carry out the customer service? Now, how do you carry out, carry out a customer service? What kind of satisfaction is important for a customer? What is the satisfaction that becomes very important for a customer? To acknowledge that here is the authority in an organization where we are helping. For example, let us say that in my class, you are sitting here, okay. So sitting in the class, if I am not able to deliver a service that is required by students, I will not be fit enough for a faculty in this case. Is it correct or not? Is it correct or not? I will become incompetent because my faculty in this case, if I am not providing a service, what kind of service I have not provide help? What kind of service in the faculty I should provide to a student or to a student to reason how that I will be here for the next 10 years or 15 years? What are they, what would be your most important service? From my end you are looking at? So I don't want to have a bummer in, I mean, student, I just want students to get and tell that this is what a kind of service I am looking for from Umesh Kira Karten. Or as a faculty, you said here, class. What kind of service you are looking at at this moment? So you have overrated knowledge. Why do you, why do you from here? What are the reasons? Your knowledge, okay. One business knowledge, do you feel that you are getting your knowledge to use? Sure, okay. Now, do you feel that the knowledge has been given by a faculty is enough? By a faculty is enough for you to become quite successful. So what is the fact? Practical knowledge in what way? What do you feel practical knowledge?
Practical knowledge, uh, actually others, actually from how you help.
Okay. Now, if you need to say that you need to have an experience of, experience of people, isn't it? You need to have an experience, okay. Do you feel that, do you feel that the services or the values which are, what's, what's, what's? Talking about values. Okay, but I'll give you a part of the solution. It's telling that experiences something, when you look at that faculty, he is looking for an experience. Is it, experience early on, on a particular class?
I think it's a particular field, I think it's a particular field, there is absolutely no agreement. You would be having the kind of, the kind of contacts that will be developed in information technology. The contacts through information technology, you don't have any physical importance. Do you mean a virtual relation or a physical title? I mean a, a personal, what kind of relation you're looking at? On a, on a typically average Indian person, what type of relation you're looking at? Are you looking for a virtual type of relation or something? I hope you understand. I'm sure that people who have lost contacts with people and other. Now, do you feel that that kind of thing is more important for a person? Or is it the kind of relevance or making sure that we know each other? Which one is it? Okay, that I can tell you the answer? Personally, personally in, personally, can a personal relations? Place to place, our relationship, why do you feel that? Okay. Nineteen forty-three. Nineteen forty-three is a year that's very important, isn't it? What is important to nineteen forty-three? What is important to nineteen forty-three? Nineteen forty-three is a year, what is the importance of nineteen forty-three? What is the importance of nineteen forty-three? They say important for nineteen forty-three, they say important for nineteen forty-seven. What is that important? Why? What do you feel nineteen forty-three is important? So nineteen forty-three or how is it important? Why is nineteen forty-three and nineteen forty-seven so important? What has happened between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven? Why do you feel nineteen forty-three and nineteen forty-seven going to be nineteen forty-five or something? Forty-three and forty-seven, forty-three, nineteen forty-seven, what does happen? Is it five, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? What is nineteen forty-three, forty-seven, what does happen? What happens between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven? You're hiding your fear. What happens from nineteen forty-three to forty-seven? What happens between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven? Contributions, what, what my question is, what happens between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven? Forty-seven, sir? You should be sure, tell me. All the same, it's like a, all the same of India, there is a relation between the states of India. That is still not happening, even though Mahatma Gandhi had a vision of it. Now, what, what happens between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven? Hey, hey, hey. What, what, what vision has he had in forty-seven? What happened, what happened? What happened? Nineteen forty-three and forty-seven, what kind of service, different service, different sense? Happens nineteen, between nineteen forty-three and forty-seven, sir? I shouldn't be quite polite, I shouldn't be very, very transparent, or maybe, maybe fourteen, fourteen and forty-seven. Why is nineteen forty-three so important? Why is nineteen forty-seven so important? Well, better than nineteen forty-seven, okay, sir, how do you feel that's very important? Forty-three, what happened? Nineteen forty-three. Silent stores, you have an idea of nineteen forty-three, is that? Very good, very good, okay. What is the importance of commerce value of nineteen forty-three? Please, please. Just study the, the, okay. Now, nineteen forty-two, forty-seven, what happens? What happened? Yeah, it's important, silent stores, commerce, nineteen forty-three. Is it important for them? Is it important? I don't understand your question, why, why, nineteen forty-three, what, 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 what do you think? My question is very creative, is that? Tell me, what happens between nineteen forty-three and forty-four, sir? What happened, what happened? I'm asking him, he answered it, tell me. What, what happened, what is, what is? Whatever you feel, it happens in nineteen forty-four, what happened? What happened? You're not able to tell, I should be able to ask others, shall I go ahead? You're very happy to say that, sir. Nineteen forty-three, what happened? Tell it, tell it, okay, okay. Public, public interest, interest. Don't know, what happened, what happened, tell me, tell me. People, at that point, I have particular time, can you, can you, can you, can you, people, people? Okay, people had a passion to read. What is the passion of the person, this, what is the passion, people? What was the passion, people were telling something, be passionate enough to read? Ah, ah, the, okay, ah, ah, the, yes, okay. Also not easy to remember nineteen forty-seven, nineteen forty-seven. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just worried, I'm not thinking about any kind of bringing and purchasing. I'm just, what is a, what is a, what is a passion, passion, what is a passion, what is it? Why was this, why was this, and what was the reason for taking this song? Why, why, what do you feel like customers, customers? During the period of, you know, when it's a struggle, people need to do whatever they want, that's what, sir. Nineteen forty-three to forty-seven, it was all assets, in the world, right? Doja, doja, doja. I'll just repeat the words. No, no, tell me, tell me, no, no, tell me, tell me. What do you intend to do, because you are telling that you want to have, you want, you want to, you want to, you're putting something of export, etcetera. Transports, etcetera, which you want, sir. Reading, reading, what kind of reading they have, they were reading, reading? Okay. Why did people prefer or, you know, what is the reason? It's not because we were not in a rate of, we were, we were reading. What is the reason that, what is the reason that, passion for reading, actually, actually, specific, specific into the context of literature, history, and other aspects. What is the reason for it? History of Indian, do you, do you read the historic, do you have, do you have any interest in history? Do you have any interest in history? You are interested. You have interest for history, okay. Now, can I, can I, what's the last, when, when you were, three from? British, who was the person that he gave, who was the last, twice, like? All that, all that, all that, now, British Empire was actually having, there was a power transition from. From that to that, from. What kind of revolution, what kind of goal? In nineteen forty-seven, there was a transition. What kind of transition happened? Only a colonialism. Only a colonialism, you're talking about colonialism. Okay, okay. So, you say that other kinds of British colonies come from Indian, now, now. Nineteen forty-seven, you only told the nineteen forty-three silent books was came to India. So nineteen forty-seven, why was, why was, why did all this, the person, why did not? Is it a person who, what is age? What is age? What is age? You're correct, okay, we were not mentioned. Not mentioned, you were not mentioned, okay, so what, what did Wajir Khan do? Or what did Wajir Khan do to order, was Wajir Khan approach by somebody to make sure that something is happening? What did Wajir Khan do, actually? For many people of society, he established a new story, is it? Is it a service? Is it a service? What kind of services? What kind of service actually has, in nineteen forty-three to forty-seven, what kind of service actually happened? And who did the service? Was Wajir Khan, did Wajir Khan do the service or somebody did the service, Wajir Khan? Platform, is it? Okay, for knowledge. It's a different library for, okay, now, what is the difference between a bookstore and a library? Was it a library? Okay, now. Okay, was it purchasing or something else? Purchasing, purchasing, then. How did the purchase, a person coming and, a person comes to a bookstore, they purchase a book? During nineteen forty-three, how was the purchase being done? Or how was the sale being done? How did you make a relation? You're talking, somebody is talking of behavioral importance here, who's talking? Also important for a settlement of fire. Or how, how does a person become a fire? Or how does a person become a fire in, in silent bookstore in nineteen forty-three or nineteen forty-seven? My question is, my question is, how did a person become a fire in nineteen forty-seven? How did, how do you, how do you actually feel that a person becomes a fire? You say that he comes and buys the books and goes back, but, but why the book, there is, there is. There is willingness to buy, is that? Now, if willingness to buy a book is being undertaken, don't you feel that there is a kind of contribution that happens? What kind of contribution that happens? Delighting the customer delight, are you trying to, to the cross the customer delight or? Customer satisfaction, is customer satisfaction or customer delight is only different, what do you mean by customer delight? You need to say that any other version of customer delight, what do you mean by customer delight? I'm also going to use the word for customer delight, what do you mean by that? Now, what is the meaning of customer delight and delight? You are giving a book, that's my, do you feel that's a customer delight? What is the value, is it, is it, is it? Why do people come and buy books? How many of you go and buy books from my bookstore? What is the reason point to buy a book? Because you're enforced to buy a book, isn't it? Are you enforced by a book? If I ask you to, nobody took economic times to the class today because you are not delighted to take an economic time today. What, why, why did that happen? You actually purchased something, you have given money for it, you have not bought an economic time in the class. No, none of the students in the class bought an economic time. Now you're telling customer delight is something very important or building a relation, is that? So what is customer delight? Yes. I have to give a comment to a topic to customer, you know that. Is that what is customer delight? Please, 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 it's wrong. I just want, I think that there will be a kind of personal concern. The B P T here, okay, we here don't want to do that. We here the class. What are you telling about? Customer, okay, tell me, tell me what actually, what, what is the clear definition of customer delight from beyond counter? Yes, I got this, Kuntan. Product quality and service, what are you talking about that? You never talked about product quality. How do you feel that product is qualified to become a customer delight? What are the reasons for, how, how do you feel that customer is, yeah? So he says that, he says that if a particular customer goes out and calls his friends or friends, that becomes customer delight. Is that customer delight? Oh, sure, you should have, I won't even talk about that. We have to, after, continue, we do about, we like to, all. Is it safe? Yes, just tell you, it is not loop, it is, it is loop, why do you feel that is loop? Yes, yes, Shiva, is it, Anima, okay, tell me, what's your name, what's your name? You're visiting the class? Yes, yes. And you're asking me regarding the whole of customer. Ah, customers, any product, you can, they can, they can, they can, they can, they can. Customers, once, once a person buys your product, can do that, it will satisfy you, that will again be, carry that, there are other products, you know, market. If he is satisfied, he will be again coming, then I will try to definitely now to use the word for customer retention. What is the retention? Retain a customer asset from the point of view of the seller or from the customer? Is it alone for the point of seller? Is it alone for the retention, is it alone for the point of seller? Do you feel that a customer wanted to make sure that they're retaining and organizing the society with two good for him, for her? Do you, do you not feel? Do you feel that a customer would like to make sure that there is a particular organization that is retained in the society? Now. So I feel that customer delight is, is a consensus. What Rima has told, do you agree?
I'm not able to get a confirmation.
Tell me. It's silent bookstore, give you a customer delight. Then the key of silent bookstore, give it there. After that, okay, I'm talking about bookstore, silent bookstore, didn't give a delight for it, or one, or do you like it? You are like. You have visited the bookstore. No, have you visited silent bookstore, then how do you say that you are like it? Okay, so you are not like it. Are you like it or not? You are not like it, okay, now. Nineteen forty-seven, I'll, I'll, I'll just come back to you, Sachin, I'll just come back to you later, okay, regarding this. Now, nineteen forty-seven, there was a transition, is that? I just want you to, I just want you to, because nine fifteen right now, I'll just make, how many people are here, thirteen, one. Is that, you make ten groups, I just want you to discuss in five minutes and get back, okay, now. I just want you to tell me what exactly happened after nineteen forty-seven. Okay. Nineteen forty-seven, and why is nineteen forty-seven so important, just write it, why is nineteen forty-seven so important? What has happened after nineteen forty-seven? And what will happen? Okay, so, yeah. I'll just pick up numbers, one, two, three, let's count, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. So, one, two, three, till, how many, how many, thirty-one, so, divide it, how many groups? Oh, I see, four, eight, eight, four, nine. Yeah, just, just divide yourself. Start. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two. One, two, three, you're one, okay, so all ones, in one group and two is in one group and, oh, so, so, so. Now, do one thing, I'll, I'll do one. I'll share with the books. You're there. You come. The vision, you come. You'll be here. One, two, three, you go. You come here. You join us. You will have only two members, okay, the final. Let's become three plus, sorry, how many, how many groups are you making right now? Ten plus one, oh, sorry. How many groups are you making? Thirty-one, ten, seven groups are, ten groups are made, so one group will have four members. Okay, one group will have, you do one thing. You come here. So four and one, okay. Now. I just want you to discuss, you can just stand or somewhere in a circle or somewhere, just, just, just come back, within five minutes, nine twenty, nine twenty-five, you will be back, okay, we'll start this. That is, you can open up the lab, I just want, I've given the questions, is it, I just want to come back, yes, then go ahead. You want to have, you want to go and discuss also a comeback, we will fast. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, you can also have four. Four members, three, 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 you be there, you be there. No, no, you be there, you be there. 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4. Improvements for the pattern. You ready? Are you ready? It's 7 minutes right now. You ready? Are you, 2 more minutes? 2 more minutes. Yes. Tell me, tell me group by order of solution, 1, 2, 3, 4. We will start from the back. Here, 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 here. Start from the back. Who's going to anchor, who's going to anchor the role of giving a solution? Yes, certainly in specific terms. What question had given, just repeat, I mean, just answer. In 1947, what exactly happened? Please, please be quiet, yes. Okay. Establishment, then. I have ordered the words. That is your conclusion, listen, I have ordered the establishment of Sali Bhuksho. Nothing more than. No, no, I just want, exactly, what is the most important aspect you have seen? Most important, the fashion, if it is fashion, tell me it's fashion, if it is establishment, please tell me it's fashion. Establishment is Sali Bhuksho. I just want one. Establishment of Bhuksho, 1947. Others, please be quiet, no more, yes. Uh, can you have more precise? Can you make it more precise, specific? Yes, as you have told, it's establishments, Sali Bhukshos, just give response. Shift of economy, technology, technology shift of, you mean to say that technological advancement. Then, in 1947, are you sure about it? So I am asking you to, you don't come over there. What is your? You have to tell your importance, 1947. Okay, so what happened after that? Should I shift technological advancement to after or 1947, after? Okay, so what should I write in 1947? Historical relevance, so shall I, historical relevance for what? No, historical relevance for what? It's for Bhuksho, it's a culture or something, it's world. Now, other groups, please, here, 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 teach one normal, yes. I just want, what is the historical relevance when I, when I quote the historical relevance of broad letters? It will have, I mean, it will have different versions of the rest of the things. Historical relevance of what? Is it of Sali Bhukshos, is it of books, is it of culture, is it of people? Historical relevance of the culture, okay. Okay, and what can be done? If you look on to three suggestions, what can be done on this? If, is there a problem? What, what a problem? No, 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 what a problem? What exactly has happened to Sali Bhukshos? You were unable to create it to the need, so what is your suggestion for that? Okay, there should be more customer focused. Okay, second group. Who's going to do? 1943. 1943, what happened? What should I write, is it establishment or support from areas? Establish, okay. Okay, 47. We are running out of time, I have only 5 more minutes. What is, what happened? Indifference, okay. You are very fond of the word called indifference. Okay, after indifference? You mean to say that there has been a transfer of repositories? Knowledge, is it transfer of knowledge? What do you mean repository, you have heard of what called? What is a repository? Repository is, I am sure that you are very confident in environment economy. Most of people are very good at, that's what I heard. Okay, you mean to say that there is a, there was a transfer. Knowledge, knowledge transfers, is that what you mean? Okay. Now. When they have transferred knowledge, but were they able to succeed on that? Were they able to succeed on that? So that is what, if they were not able to be, they were not able to succeed on it, what could be done on that? I'm not, I'm not getting, are you all over? You need to say that they should actually look for more online, is that, that's what. Okay, you need to say that Sali Bhuksho should actually have a technological advancement or you might be learning a course, shall I quote it? Okay. Okay, third group. I'll take, yes. My God, please. I just want one, one, one answer. Okay. No, 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 my, what is the, what happened, is it establishment or is it social cost, addressing a social cost? Oh, establishment of an organization or addressing a social cost. Okay, so you mean to say I definitely write as addressing a social cost. Is that, that is both predominant in your approach. Is it a predominant suggestion from yours? Is establishment of an organization more relevant or addressing a social cost more relevant? Addressing a social, okay. Okay, 1947. What, what, what group the? You mean to say widening interest? Widening interest of people to read different books. Okay. Improved interest, is that, improved interest for reading. Okay, now after 1947, what exactly happened, were they successful in? Okay, now after nineteen forty seven, what exactly happened, were they successful in? Putting across a decision of improved learning in, uh, improved interest for their reading? So you have quoted the social cost, second is improved interest for reading, were they successful? And does what you asked? They were, so what exactly will come here after nineteen forty seven? Okay, you mean to say that improved interest for reading has expanded the scope into different, uh? Different areas, okay. Uh, okay, advanced the interest, okay. Advanced interest of reading. And is there a problem? Yeah, you have pointed out that there is an advanced interest for reading that has happened in people. Now, that's what, after nineteen forty seven. Is there, is there a problem? Okay, okay, I understand, I understand, then after. Okay. So there is this particular importance that has been generated by? From a societal cause, it is being downgraded or degraded, as it comes out. They were not able to create it, what was the reason? Was it, they had diversified? What was, what was the reason for, even though they have diversified, what was the reason for that they couldn't achieve? Or is it anything else? No. Here, here, here. Oh, you mean to say that there is absolute lack of customer, uh? So, can I, can I define in my own way that it is lack of customer relationship? I, 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 do you have part break first? You have part wait, part, uh, last question. There is no part view, I just want a whole option. That's the lack of CR, is that? Okay, you have learnt CR? You have heard of the word for customer needs? You have learnt, okay. So you feel that even though they have advanced in information technology, they couldn't actually? They couldn't actually stimulate the interest for customer relations, is that? You mean to say that IT is not a tool for CR? Do you feel that IT is not a tool for CR? Okay, now, let me, let me conclude your, your laptop CR, the customer relation. And writing is very good, okay, now. Yes. Mine got three. So you mean to say that the society was learned, I mean, it was a literate society. That is nineteen forty, it was a literate society, is that? Okay, it was a literate society in nineteen forty three. Mine got seven. Nineteen forty seven. Historical and cultural background, uh? I mean, uh? The reading habits. Reading habits? Not to say literate society, they have a reading as, uh, interest towards historical books, is that? Interest by historical books, okay. After. There was a literate society. Historical books as connected with this, now, after nineteen forty seven. Was this organization or? Let me put it across in a different manner, was a platform created? Was enough for the literate society to continue as a literate society? I hope you understood. There is a society which is interested towards reading all the books. There is, the people are quite interested, now you say that, that particular aspect has continued, the people are interested in reading historical books. That's my question, was this particular organization? So you mean to say literate society was dead? After nineteen forty seven? Nineteen eighties, okay, interest for reading books actually? Okay, interest for reading books was, okay, okay, okay. It was a dip in, uh? Okay, then. If there is a dip, I am sure that it is going to, it is going to suffer, the organization, because the organization is? Related to? Okay, now what can organization do or? Okay, you mean to say that old, uh? And? You mean to say that Sahil bookstore should start up with a research quest for understanding the? Understanding the interest of people on a demographic aspect, sorry. Okay, you mean to say that the organization should actually research, is that? Organization should actually research to find out? Okay, okay. Okay. Generation of research question. So I just need to finish my next, is that okay? No, he is not there. Okay, okay, go ahead. Okay, establishment, okay. So, 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 you are very fond of the word, social cost. Okay. Yes. Okay, reading passion. Okay. Advancement, technological advancement. Reading habits of? This technological advancement, what should be, what should be done? There is technological advancement, is there a problem or it is possible? Okay, changing habits of. Okay. Yes. Okay. Maintenance. Okay. How to maintain? Okay. So maintenance of, you said maintenance of? Okay. Okay, 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 maintenance of background. Okay, now. Uh, what happened? Why? Why? So you mean to say that technological advancement is becoming irrelevant for? Or has caused harm for the Sahil bookstore? Okay, you mean to say that technological advancement will not actually benefit the development of Sahil, Sahil bookstore? Okay. Okay. So you mean to say that the technological advancements, even though happened, wouldn't relate to the needs and interests of people who were actually having a passion for reading books? Even though there was a lot of e-learning facilities, is that what you are telling? You mean to say that e-learning facilities, even though that was available? People were not interested to take up e-learning facilities because of the background of Sahil bookstore? What is? So that is what I'm, the thing is, your customer change is that, technological advancement actually has changed the habits of customers. Now, even though the technological advancement has happened, you say that there is a dip in? The passion of customers should come out to Sahil bookstore and to read it. But that is indirectly, what does indirectly mean? E-learning facilities that was made available for customers who are actually not taken as a recurring tool for customers to? That's what I mean. Even though, for example, you are giving an IT, you are giving an importance for something, advanced learning effort, now, customers had a passion for reading books. Sahil bookstore is known for that. Sahil bookstore has actually made up their passion for development of? Development of interest of reading through a lot of technological tools. Now, what happens indirectly, the, the, the measures being adopted by Sahil bookstore by giving? Giving scope for? Information technology advancement has not benefited Sahil bookstore. So, what happens? What, what has happened? There is no relation between a lot of things, what happened? Why, why customers are not satisfied? But even though the reading habits were changed from one place to next place, there was something that is happening in Sahil bookstore. You have, you have a daily routine. What do you do? In the morning? What do you do? In the morning, you get a? Take bath, take bath, go brush your teeth. Oh, both of them, yes. Do you brush your teeth? I hope, I hope you brush your teeth. Yes. There is a routine mechanism for that. Something, then relax your body. Then go to the beach, then lunch. Dinner. Is that, what is it called? Is it a routine or a habit? Is it a routine? If you integrate all those, what do you mean by that? Habit, how does a habit come? How do you create habit for coming to class, what are the reasons for coming to class, anything? Yes. What, what is? And? Point system. Point system you for, point system is so see, that means, now what does an integrity mean? If you don't have one, you will control the other. Okay, okay, now Sahil bookstore has clearly done it, now what is lacking? You think, you think? Okay, I mean, I am sure that you have your answers with you, you can think and design out, yes? Nineteen forty three. I am putting blank over you, okay? Yes. Okay. Okay, transference. Okay, okay, now what, what can I, what, what can I, if, did they succeed after nineteen forty seven? Technological advancement has staff's attitude to me. If technological advancement has made staff's attitude negative? There should be people who are being, they are being identified, is that right? My question is very simple. You have to go the technological advancement, the spirit of school. Okay. Is that your, that's a problem? That's a problem, now what can be done? What can be done? What should be done?
They should say that, uh, they should also say, uh?
You are completely opposite, right? The two that technological advancement has made a negative impression on the staff who both was selling books. But e-learning effort doesn't include it. You need to say that there should be, uh? You need to say that there should be, uh, a focus on educating your staff, sir? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not, uh? What is the? Okay, change happens, okay, now, there is a change. Is it because of selling books or is it? Charity, is it because of social competitions? What is social competition? There, there is a society, certain, uh, competitions because of the certain values being? Now, it is not, uh, it is not related to selling books. Selling books, those, have they been able to create some kind of, uh, values for the society? Right, they have, what, what kind of values? Now, again, I mean, what is it, have they been able to create values for society? You need to say that, even though values were created by selling books, those in terms of the economy, the values actually never surfaced. The need, need of a person to be a customer was, is it? Is it, the value created by organization has not translated, a person as a customer for? Is that? Can I, can I conclude in another? Is it, okay, so, value is actually not helping out, value created. So, what can be done? Yeah, I understand, no, uh, I am talking after 1947. Lack of value at the start. So, that value created by selling books, those towards, uh, uh, towards the, uh, persons outside has not helped. Also, the values created by selling books, those internally has also not helped, selling books, those group, is it? Is that, okay? Char, man. What do you mean, Char, man? Is, is that, sir? You want to, uh? I mean? What do you mean, sir? Tell me what, sir? Hey, thank you, sir. Value, sir? Is that? So, that is what is, sir? Okay, so, don't feel that, uh, organization has to develop?